Okay, we're gonna call to order the City of Sherwood Planning Commission meeting for June 14th, 2022. Roll call.
Chair Simpson.
Here.
Vice Chair Kai.
Here.
Commissioner Waidola.
Present.
Commissioner Vance.
Here.
Commissioner Montalvo.
Here.
Commissioner Lampros.
All right, moving on, consent agenda. That consists of the approval of the May 24th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, any comments, corrections, or additions? All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counsel liaison, I do not see our counselor. Is he dialing in, or are we moving on?
Moving on.
Moving on then, right on to staff announcements. Good evening.
Good evening, commission. So I want to let everyone know that tomorrow there is a Sherwood West Community Advisory Committee meeting. It is the first meeting in person for this group since COVID. They're meeting at 5:30 in this room from 5:30 to 7:30 if anyone is standing. It's a, it's a public meeting. And then on June 28th, we have a planning commission meeting that evening. We have three hearings scheduled for that night. We are going to be starting at 6 o'clock, an hour earlier. And then Colleen will be reaching out to all of you individually about what we're meeting some, for some dinner. With that, I think that's the end of my announcements for tonight.
Our seventh member, do you, what's the date of the appointment?
So, so he's been appointed.
Okay, good.
And then hopefully we're gonna begin that tran, new transition with him during our next meeting on June 28th.
So he gets to start at the longest meeting of the year? Don't scare off the new people, Erica. All right, thank you very much. All right, community comments. Community comments are limited to those items not already on the agenda. And seeing no one, I will move on to public hearings. The first public hearing is case file LU 2022-06 SPVAR Sherwood Boulevard Multifamily. And it is called to order. Before I describe the procedures for conducting a public hearing, I want to note that the applicant has requested a continuance of this hearing to July 12th, 2022. The applicant has also signed a corresponding 120-day waiver. The planning commission can grant the requested continuance or conduct the hearing this evening as previously scheduled. The public testimony received thus far has been entered into the record and will be addressed as part of the public hearing on this application, whether that hearing is conducted tonight or at a later date. Staff, is there anything further you would like to address regarding the requested continuance?
Thank you, Chair Simpson and planning commissioners. I'm just clarify, the reason for the request is to add an additional variance to the application, really partially on staff. You know, we try and catch all the procedural requirements up front, but this one, sometimes we get into writing the staff report and, you know, identify an issue where we can't recommend approval unless a certain type of additional permit is obtained. And so, in this case, it was an additional variant, so just want to thank the applicant for working with us to apply for the variance that's needed and go through the right process to, for staff to make a recommendation, so that's the reason. And yep, confirming your dates that the continued hearing will be on July 12th. We've had some interest in the development from the community, and so just want to clarify, it'll be July 12th, 7:00 PM.
And the public can still continue to submit written testimony up to 24 hours in advance, or they can come and testify at the hearing on July 12th?
Correct.
All right, are there any questions of staff or any issues the commission would like to discuss relating to the requested continuance? All right, is there a motion to continue the public hearing?
I move the Sherwood Planning Commission continue, no, it's not. Continue the public hearing on application Sherwood Boulevard Multifamily, case file LU 2022-006, at the request of the applicant and with the applicant extending the 120-day tolling deadline until July 12th.
All right.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we continue LU 2022-006 SPVAR Sherwood Multifamily, Sherwood Boulevard Multifamily to July 12th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We are moving on to the next. Public hearing on LU 2022, oh, it doesn't have a number in there, just a second. All right.
It's on the screen now.
Oh. I did find it. LU 2022-009 SP Tresky Precision Machining Site Plan is now called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report, questions, if any, by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and time will be limited as follows. Applicants will have 30 minutes split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application will have four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application will have four minutes each. Rebuttal from the applicant will be the remainder of their 30 minutes. Then no other testimony will be taken from the public or applicant unless the public testimony period is reopened. Final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any, by the commission, and then deliberation by the commission. A decision may be made by the planning commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. Staff will recognize people who have signed up to speak 24 hours in advance to provide testimony via phone. When it is your time to provide testimony, please state your name and address for the record. If you are in the audience this evening and wish to speak, please fill out one of the blue testimony forms and submit it to the planning staff. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. Any questions should be addressed through the chair. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. The staff report is available online and at City Hall. The staff was report, the staff report was accessible to the public seven days prior to this meeting date. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe applied to the decision. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest, indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Hearing none, does any member of the audience wish to challenge any planning commission member's ability to participate? Hearing none. Planning staff will now present the staff report. But if we could have one minute, we have one monitor that's not working.
Yeah, we can get that fixed before we start.
No.
If we can't, we might just need to play musical chairs and.
Or we could just share.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what it was. I went through that.
Oh, we'll share.
Yeah, I'm fine here. I don't need to hold anyone.
All right, good evening, Chair Simpson and planning commissioners. Eric Rutledge, associate planner here at the city. Happy to be giving the presentation on LU 2022-009 SP for Tresky Precision Machining Site Plan Review. Application summary, the applicant is requesting approval of a type four site plan review to develop an approximately 36,500 square foot industrial building in the general industrial zone. The type four hearing authority is planning commission and the appeal authority is city council. The application was routed to affected agencies on May 16th, 2022, and public notice of the application was provided in accordance with city code. That includes mailed notice to property owners within 1,000 feet of the site. To date, as of this hearing, we have not received any public comments or testimony on the application. This is a quasi judicial land use review, so the decision is required to be made based on the applicable criteria. So all of the code sections that apply are listed on the screen and addressed in the staff report. And again, no public comments were received. Getting into the details of the site, the locations, the site is outlined here in red. To get oriented, Galbreath Drive is a local industrial street, all of the properties on each side and along Galbreath primarily developed with industrial land uses. The DMV site is located adjacent to the property to the southwest. To the, on the adjacent property to the northeast is Tresky's existing site. So this building includes everything outlined in blue, so this building here and these buildings, and then the central parking area. So the plan and, and vision is for these two sites to sort of be compatible with each other and, and work with each other, both in terms of access, parking, and overall design. This is the railroad right-of-way that goes through Sherwood, so has frontage on that. Does not have frontage on Tuolton Sherwood Road, which is here, and Galbreath is accessed from Gerda Lane, which is about right here. Existing conditions, the site is approximately 1.96 acres and is vacant, as you can see here. No trees or significant vegetation on the property. The site is zoned, general industrial, and surrounded by general industrial zoning in all directions. I think this is a pretty good slide to touch on, the industrial design standards that we have in the city as well. So industrial developments that are located along an arterial street and portions of the site within 200 feet of the arterial are required to comply with the city's industrial design standards. Those standards do not apply, or at least in the staff report indicate, staff report indicates those standards do not apply because the development of butts, Galbreath, which is a local street, and also has frontage on, on the railroad, but not on Tuolton Sherwood Road. And so when you, when you go into those industrial design standards, they're geared towards and, and really only work when the property has actual frontage on an arterial, because things like setbacks come into play. And so because the property doesn't have frontage on an arterial, those design standards don't apply. Just want to clarify that, it's a good slide to clarify that point on. Terms of the zoning and proposed land use, the development will serve an expansion for Tresky Precision Machining. I understand the owners here and kind of speak to the business and operations and growth of the business recently, but Tresky is a local manufacturer of precision parts that serves the aerospace, defense, and semiconductor industries, among others. The new building will be used for manufacturing and warehousing, which are permitted outright in the general industrial zone. The development standards of the general industrial zone shown here on the left side and the proposed development standard shown on the right, all of the development standards are met, no variances are proposed. Getting into the site plan, fairly straightforward, I guess with the exception that it will connect to the existing Tresky site to the northeast, so the connection would be made here through the drive aisle. A new driveway curb cut is proposed to Galbreath Drive as part of this site as well, so one access on this side, one access on the others, and then they'll connect through this drive aisle here. Proposed building shown in gray, landscaping shown in green around the perimeter. This area here, I colored it differently, is it's, there'll be a fence, sort of a secure fence here, so this will be a secured loading and sort of operations area at the rear of the site. This area here is, also serves as a storm drainage corridor. Terms of parking, total of 59 stalls are proposed. Getting into the details of the landscape plan, so industrial and commercial developments are required to provide a 30% tree canopy over the site, so the development meets that through the new tree plantings. A lot of landscaping proposed around the perimeter. There'll be additional street trees here that aren't shown. Again, this area serves as a storm drainage area, but it will also be landscaped to the extent that it can. Terms of the building design, again, the building industrial design standards don't apply to the site, but here are the elevations. So the street facing elevation, Galbreath would be here, the west elevation, primary entrance would be just right here. This would be the south facing elevation that faces the DMV site. So glazing and canopies proposed for each of those frontages. This would be the rear of the building where a connection is made to the existing Tresky building on the adjacent site. And then just some more details on the building design. The colors are shown here on the right side, two different types of glass are proposed, and then also the fixtures are shown as well. This would be the corner of the building that faces Galbreath Drive at the northwest corner of the building. In terms of utilities, this is from the Sherwood map site, but water and sewer are located in Galbreath Drive. And as I mentioned a few times, the storm facility is located here on the south end of the site, sort of open drainage area. One condition of approval that staff is recommending, just to really clarify the requirements for attaching the, the building to the existing Tresky building. We wanted to make sure that we acknowledged that, you know, that that is what's happening as part of the application, and then just make sure that all of our other standards are met. So it'd be recommended, condition of approval A11. The applicant shall obtain a building permit to connect the proposed building to the existing building on the adjacent tax lot. If a building permit cannot be obtained due to the location of the property line, a lot consolidation and building permit is required prior to making the connection. So the reason we put in this little caveat about the location of the property line, the building code, not, not our development code, but the building code that buildings are required to be built to has requirements for fire separation on a property line. And so, you know, our, our building official, we really don't do that research for the developer, so we kind of, at the building permit submiddle stage, have them apply for the building permits and show that the building code is met. And so, you know, we don't really want to say yes or no right now. It seems feasible. I just want to say that, it seemed completely feasible. But in case there's an issue with the building code, we just wanted to clarify that a lot consolidation is needed. So that process, which, the applicant shouldn't have an issue obtaining a lot consolidation. I'm just bringing those two lots together and creating one large lot. So I think either way, the development can happen and move forward, but we just want to, A, acknowledge that the buildings are going to be connected, and then B, make sure that the building code is, is met, is really the intent of the, of the condition. And with that, staff recommends approval of LU 2022-009, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report, and addition of condition of approval A11. The planning commission alternatives, approve the application based on the findings and conditions in the staff report, approve the application with revised findings and conditions, or deny the application with revised findings. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you very much, and with the condition A11, if they do a lot, either, either way with a lot consolidation, it's not another hearing in front of us, it's just a staff level decision.
That's right. Lot consolidation is type one staff decision.
So it'll be easy for the applicant to process that. All right, does anybody have any questions of the staff before we call up the applicant to provide input?
Sorry, I just had a quick question, is, again, I'm not sure filling it out, it might be a question for the applicant, but is there, a couple of the plans show a gate at the driveway at Galbreath. Is that just for security and be closed at night, or is that, what is the intent?
That, I think that would be more appropriate for the applicant. I have seen the gate on the plans, but I don't know that the narrative really clarified how it would be used, if it opens and closes, or if they want to close it and just use the adjacent entrance, and they'd be a good question for the applicant, though.
Just as a follow-up, does the city have a requirement for the location of such a gate in relation to the right-of-way?
City does not, the fire department may. The, so they have a fire service provider letter, which indicates the, the standards are met or they can be met. So, yeah, city does not, the fire department may, but they've, the applicant has a fire service provider letter. So to the, to city staff, that indicates that the fire requirements can also be met.
Yeah, okay. On packet page 42, talks about parking, and it mentions that a ratio of 75% industrial, 25% warehousing has been applied to determine the minimum required parking. Where do those percentages come from in your analysis?
From the applicant.
From the applicant, okay.
So, yeah, just in, I don't know if they put it in their plans or not, but yeah, that was determined with input from the applicant.
Okay.
So if you, if you have concern about the ratio or the amount of parking provided, we can drill down into that and, and.
So our approval would expect that that occurs? Couldn't change the dynamic there and then suddenly be underparked?
Yeah, that's a, it's a good question in terms of, you know, how sites are managed long-term, and sort of compliance with the code is met long-term, you know, these buildings. I'm not sure the architect might be able to say exactly how long the lifespan of the building is, but, you know, we, the city would expect multiple owners over time, even if the intent is for this owner to own it. So oftentimes, new tenants do go in buildings that, where the parking ratios are slightly different. How we handle that internally is prior to issuance of a new building permit for the new tenant or occupancy for that new tenant, planning department would review it and make sure that there's nothing, you know, really egregious there. But if they're generally the same use and, you know, ratio, then there's no problem. But in terms of this, this specific owner and applicant, yeah, we would, and we would expect that the, that the site and building be used as indicated in the, in the application related to parking ratios, yeah.
Looks like with the highest density, which is the industrial with 1.6, if you applied that 1.6 factor to 100% of the square footage, it's.
Still works out?
Still, it's 58.5.
Oh, okay.
Basis, so. But there, there's probably other more intense parking maybe, but not, from the IT manual, but not proposed in this application.
Yeah, so for industrial, the highest you're gonna get is, is industrial.
And so that is the highest.
At 1.6. If they, well, office, you know, sometimes offices included in these, but generally we just take the, take industrial and offices like ancillary to that parking, you know, so it's just included in the industrial ratio. So for industrial, there's probably not anything that's higher than the 1.6. Other uses, yeah, office, you know, dentist and that stuff goes way.
Retail.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
On packet page 66, under odors, this might be a typo, I'm curious.
Sounds like it might be, go ahead.
Says the proposed use as manufacturing and warehousing is expected to produce odors that negatively impact adjacent properties, which would be is not.
That's a typo. Thank you for catching that. A, an important, a, it changes the, the finding, so it is an important typo.
That's why I asked, yeah.
Thank you. Can you give me that page again?
That was packet page 66.
Yeah, we can correct that before we issue the notice of decision.
Okay, and then a question on packet page 52, it looks like there's a payment in lieu of street widening. And I guess, I guess this is more of a procedural city kind of question. Do we collect that because the city's intending to widen that street at some point and just goes into some savings account? Or what, what is the intent behind this fee?
Yeah, let me read this real quick. It's C4?
Yeah.
So it's coming from the engineering department, that's where that's coming from.
I saw that, I read his recommendation. I'm just not sure why. Said he's never gonna expand it, why would we charge a fee?
So, the, so the, there's kind of, I was just kind of trying to figure out what happened, because the applicant is gonna be required to install a sidewalk and landscape strip, you know, along the frontage. So that's a little bit different than the actual roadway pavement, and so a lot of, so there's no curb and gutter now if we go to this, well, I don't even think the, oh, this one might work. You know, there, there's no sidewalk here now, so the applicant would be required to provide the sidewalk and the planter strip. And then it's likely that no, that, that the, that the roadway is in a good enough condition that they don't need to also repave it, you know, the actual asphalt to, to center. But generally, new development would provide that, and so we're getting a fee in lieu instead. And so that would go into, you know, future paving of the whole corridor or something else. So either the developer does it, you know, to half-street, including the pavement, or they provide a fee in lieu for whatever they're not actually installing.
But if it isn't on the dock, if they ever get expanded, what is, why would we charge it? Even just because we can? Okay?
It's a code, code requirement.
Okay. And then lastly, is, maybe this is kind of a technical one, I just think I'm okay with the intent here, but on packet page 29, so it says the development site is located southwest Galbreath Drive. Goes on to say the site is 20, 200 feet, within 200 feet of Tuolton Sherwood, however proposed building is screened from the roadway by other existing buildings, so the standard does not apply. Well, I mean, just when you look at the map, this, again, I, I'm not sure I have a real substantial issue here, I'm just kind of curious. When you look at the map, it's not actually, it doesn't seem like it's actually buildings that blocks it, it's, I mean, I've driven by there and it looks like it's kind of more like landscaping and, you know, you can't see over hills. So is that kind of the intent behind that's, that's still okay? It doesn't just have to be buildings, even though the code kind of says that the intent's there, you can't see it, that's the point, so we're good?
Yeah, that's a really good question, I think an important one, because we want to get the president right on this. So there's kind of two things, if you go to, so A, I agree with you that it's, I would call it, I'd say partially screened. You know, the, the site from Tuolton Sherwood Road is partially screened by, I'd say. You know, the the site from Tuolton Sherwood Road is partially screened by, I'd say, buildings and landscaping. The because the railroad corridors there kind of opens things up. I think if if we wanted to clarify this this finding. The only thing that I would add to indicate that the stand that the that the standard does not apply would be what I mentioned in the presentation. So if you go to the page prior packet page twenty eight. In terms of meeting all these standards, you know, there's six of them and you have to meet four out of the six. Number three is a maximum thirty five foot setback for all parts of the building from the property line separating the site from all arterial or collector streets. So this, you know, they're they're really, I mean, if you look at the map, they, you know, it's it's greater than thirty five feet between the arterial road and even their property line likely. And so that to me indicated that the intent of the standard is not to apply to standard to sites that don't directly abut the arterial or collector. Because you just they wouldn't even have the opportunity to meet this particular standard. So if we wanted to clarify sort of why the standard doesn't apply, I think that's probably a more specific one that we could add. If if, you know, you're if there's concern that A it actually is visible. And so if if it's this visible in the future on another application, then we want the standard to apply if it's also adjacent, you know, actually adjacent to an arterial. So we could, I think we could certainly add that no problem to really clarify, you know, why the standards don't apply in this situation. But I would say I agree with you about the screen. I'd say partially screened is probably more correct.
Yeah, and you can't see it. It's just that that's why it was more of a technical kind of question. It wasn't really building, but you can't see it anyway. So.
Right, right. I got you. Yeah.
That was the same question I asked Eric, and that's why the slide was he added to it because I had the same question.
Oh, really?
About industrial design standards applying or not applying. And it was my same challenge that I had is could you potentially? And then at that point, is it clear and objective that it is connected to a collector and it's not it's not adjacent, it's not abutting, it doesn't take access from that collector? And so that became more.
Yeah, I know.
Clear that that was not the potentially the intent. But because some one, the other criteria was parking is located to the side of the rear when viewed from the arterial collector. Well, that really is counterintuitive to what is happening with the building because that is the rear of the building. And they're not taking access from the collector. They're taking it from the local street.
Yeah, I think that's another really good point that I just kind of when you said that is sort of all of I really probably all of the standards get thrown off in their intent if it's not if the if the road, if the arterial you're considering is not adjacent. Because then it kind of forces in this situation, it would force the site to really be, you know, really nice down on this corner with glazing and, you know, whatever it is. But that's, you know, it's the rear of their site. They're kind of saying, hey, this is the back of our site's operation. So, you know, I think in in the situation, probably a little unfortunate that all everything kind of came together like it did with the railroad being here and having some extra visibility through. But that's just kind of how things go sometimes with with development over time.
But I would be clear that if they had a collector, what was their back? And they took access from the local and they actually had a property line adjacent to the collector, then they would need them to meet it. Even if they didn't take access from it. But if they were, if they were, if they butted the.
Or a corner lot, or a corner lot. You know, because we're going to want them to take access from the lowest roadway. And so they'd still have just a, you know, frontage on that other road. And then they would definitely apply and be oriented towards that towards that road.
Yeah, or even if it was clearly visible, I think from the collector in some way, right?
That's DMV further south, right?
DMV is here.
Right. That building rebuilt would have to, even though it's still taking access from Galbraith, would have to be oriented.
Yep.
And glazed.
It did. So we applied the visual, maybe not design, but I know we applied the visual corridor standards here, for example. So we picked up on the arterial.
I don't I don't know if we had design criteria.
Yeah.
When DMV came through.
Visual corridor for sure, but probably not design.
Yeah, sign criteria is pretty new.
I think it's just important that we make clear why it doesn't apply here.
Yeah, sure. So I'd recommend, I mean, I think we maybe do it through a motion or I think we have enough where I can put it in the summary that, you know, we clarified why the design standards don't apply.
The way I read it in seven A is within two hundred feet to arterial or collector street and visible. And so the and is, you know, is there a percentage of visibility? Is it, you know, right now it's not visible because of the everything that's there, but as the building gets built up, there'll be some portion of it visible.
About that, true. Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah, yeah. And then but then again, we'd have to go back and say, all right, what are the all the standards that that we can apply and can the, you know, applicant or developer actually meet all of the standards? I think it would just, yeah, it'd be difficult. It'd be difficult to in this case.
It would be unreasonable to expect them to meet criteria that are outside of their reasonableness. Thank you for the question.
That's it for my questions.
Can't believe I missed the typo. That was that's usually my game. All right. All right. So any other questions or staff before we call the applicant out? All right. So I have Jeff Wilder has filled out a form along with other people coming up at the same time. So you can all come up. Whoever testifies, just start with your name and address for the record. Okay. And press the button for about three seconds until it turns green. There you oh.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Will Grimm with First Forty Feet. I'm a planning consultant for MDG Architecture, Jeff Wilder behind me, and also work on behalf of the client Theo, who is also here in attendance. Address is four one two Northwest Cootch Street in Portland. Nine seven two zero nine. So first, I'd like to thank Eric for working with our team to come up with a site plan that that meets our clients' needs and also meets the city goals as well. We worked really hard. It wasn't too hard, but we worked really, really well together on getting this site plan to where we wanted it. So I appreciate that. We don't have a presentation. We I knew he would do a very well, like a really good job presenting the work. However, I'd like to invite the Theo up just to talk about the business and the future expansion and the intent and the use that he's going to be, you know, what he's looking for. I think it'd be important for for the record and to help make the case for this project. So that's all I have. I'll be here for questions afterwards. But and also Jeff has an answer for the for the fence question. So he'll come up. But yeah, Theo.
And I can answer that. Oh, good. Yeah. Hi, everyone.
Yeah, I'm Theo Tresky. Owner of Tresky Precision Machining, which is at one four one four zero Galbraith Drive, right next to it. And so we've been in that spot for since basically year two thousand. Before that, we were just down the road in Tuolton for since nineteen seventy seven. So we are basically a contract manufacturer, precision machining. So we do, like you said, it's aerospace, semiconductor defense parts. So aerospace is the fun stuff. We do like basically machine components for for aircraft and spacecraft. And we do a lot of satellite work. A lot of missile defense radar projects that we supply components for. And then semiconductor is basically just semiconductor manufacturing equipment. So we do mostly individual component parts, you know, precision machine parts, and then we do some sub assemblies that we send out. Pretty much. I mean, we've since we've been in that position, since we've been in in Sherwood. I don't know. We came to Sherwood with about twenty five people. We're about a hundred and forty people now. Actually, about ninety percent of the stuff we produce is it goes out of state. It's not there's we kind of started off here in the just doing semiconductor here in the local Portland area, but so much of that went overseas. We got our aerospace certifications and then just marketed around the country. And so and so now our customers were used to be just thirty mile radius, you know, now it's it's the whole country and then and then also into Asia. We supply into Asia. But, you know, I guess in terms of like what we provide to the community, which is important, I mean, I think is, you know, so we do about thirty million in revenue, which is all coming, I said, from out of state. And we the jobs are basically starting salaries are like eighteen dollars an hour up to, you know, like seventy five dollars an hour for programmers, that sort of thing. And probably an average wage in the in the thirty dollar an hour range. So it's it's it's, you know, it's blue collar mostly, but it's it's good wage and stuff like that. So. And basically, the expansion is about just kind of current projects. We have a lot of projects that we're engaged with that are growing significantly over the next couple of years. And so we're just looking to expand the capacity of the facility to just basically do more of the same that we're doing. So it's basically CNC automated machines that are going into the facility. Like robotically loaded CNC machines. And and like it says, some of it is storage for like, you know, materials and supplies and that sort of thing. The the gate question is that we do operate twenty four seven. We have five shifts that operate twenty four seven. And the at at night and on weekend nights, I mean, that sort of thing. There are shifts that there's only like a dozen people there, fifteen people, something like that. Around a lot. So like basically doors are unlocked, doors are open, especially in the summer months, you know, a lot of things are open around there. And we do sometimes get like random people like walking like walking into the building where they shouldn't be, you know. So we want to just from a security perspective, have we'd have the gates open during the day. And then just have automatic things that would like close them at a certain hour and just close off to passerby traffic. But they'd be be open during all the, you know, days and weekdays and all that. And then then we'd have a pass key for for employees to enter and exit, that sort of thing. So that's what the so it's a you know, not tight security, but just security to keep passersby from wandering. I don't know. Is there anything else that I should touch on or is that covered?
Whatever you think is appropriate. And I think that was great. Yeah, good summary. Just great to know about about the business and sort of your reason for growth. Yeah.
We're done. Or do you have more? Oh, okay.
Thanks, Theo.
So any questions for the applicant? I had I had one. I just wanted, I didn't, I was trying to reread in the app because I I didn't notice in the plans first where Eric had highlighted the back area that's going to be fenced off. Is there going to be any exterior storage? Or do is that I didn't see it in the in the application if that was addressed or not?
No, there won't be. I mean, in that back area, so we we were fencing it in. We do have scrap material bins that are fed from the inside of the building. So it'd be like a little conveyor going to like a, I don't know, it's it's a
dumpster.
Ten foot by twenty foot bin, but it's it's closed. And so the materials go in.
And that's that's addressed in the onsite storage for waste and recycling. I would assume it's metal recycling then. Trash containers secured areas out there. Okay. And then I just a formal question. Staff put in an additional condition at the beginning of it or at the end of his staff report. I just want to ask if the applicant accepts all the conditions of approval as laid out by the staff, including the additional one.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully we can avoid the consolidation thing. That'd be a little complicated, but but we could we could work with it if we had to. And I would assume that we could comply with the building code. And I think what the assumption is is that.
Yes. So then you accept the conditions. All right, perfect. All right. Anybody else have any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And then I'm going to ask staff for a two minute recess. I need to ask you a question before we proceed. Sorry. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order by apologies and thank you for your tolerance as I went through and asked my question of staff. All right. I believe we're ready for motion. Unless there's any other questions or comments.
I move the Sherwood Planning Commission approve the application for case file twenty twenty two dash zero zero nine. Tresky Precision Machining, based on the applicant testimony, public testimony received and the analysis findings and conditions contained in the staff report.
As edited.
Including condition of approval A eleven. Okay. Was there any other any others?
All right, I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve LU twenty twenty two zero zero nine Tresky Precision Machining. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you very much. Really appreciate local business expanding like that. Very, very great for Sherwood. So thank you. Very, very great for Sherwood, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, any other commissioner comments before we adjourn this evening? That's it?
That's the whole meeting?
That's the whole meeting, commissioner comments?
Let's make our, our next meeting and the next hearing as quick as, as all of those were for the, for the three.
All right. Okay, and we are adjourned, thank you very much.